Pinellas County Supervisor's Agenda is a work session today. You're all welcome. First is a presentation from Battery Energy Storage Systems, and I'm going to hand this off to Rich to do the introduction.
Thank you Chairman. You know, I felt this was needed because, you know, with all the battery storage that's out there today, we also need to know about the future of battery storage and, you know, how safe it is, or what's going to happen. And so this is an independent company, Fire Risk Alliance, that they're an outside company. They're not, you know, they don't just work for any particular battery storage company. And I think that's important for them to, you know, they're the experts. These are ex-firefighters who assess what's going on with these batteries. We have old ones from many, many years ago, all over the country, all over the world, that we see these fires that are going on. And we think, yeah, that's what's going to happen every single day of every single kind of storage system out there. As you know, there are systems that are, you know, 10, 20, 15 years old, whatever the number is. The systems are getting better and better, and the safety is getting better and better with the technology. And that's kind of what I wanted to show, because again, there's a misconception that the world's going to be on fire with these battery storages. And, you know, again, you don't know what you don't know. So this is why I wanted to bring this to the table, so that way we can learn more. Back 10, you know, 12, 15 months ago, I was probably a no. And now today, I'm getting, based on what I see out there, I see storage systems are getting better and better. And I want to bring that to the forefront, so people understand what's going on. And doesn't mean I'm going to change any minds, but at least you know something that's coming from an independent source. And I think that's what's important, because every time a battery storage company or, you know, comes up front with solar, they walk in here, they have their experts, they work for the company. So right away, oh, we can't believe what they have to say. Well, that's why this is an independent company, and that's why I brought this to the table. So from that point forward, we might as well get into the presentation.
I just want to thank you for the introduction. Thank you for your time, first and foremost. Give a little bit of a background here. My name is James Caulfield. I work for Fire and Risk Alliance. Again, I've been in the fire service and emergency services for 20, over 22 years. So kind of validates why I'm up here. And we do this presentation, we want to share some information. So Epic Star has, you know, kind of brought us out here. And I just want to go over some of the highlighted areas of where we can level set and just give you some information of facts and findings that we're having in the industry, and what response looks like. So again, information and knowledge is power. So again, everyone up here and throughout this room has a resume. Just a little bit of a background, I'm not going to highlight all these bullet points, but just a little bit about me, of why I'm here. Again, 22 years as a police officer in the fire service, still an active firefighter. Again, doing risk and response consulting and emergency management has been my entire life and career. So I pride myself on working with firefighters all across the world, and giving them information and training to make sure that their response tactics are aligned, and everyone stays safe, because that's the reality of it. So we're going to get into it. So just a little bit of the agenda today. We're going to go over battery energy systems, and we'll talk about four main issues. We're going to talk about fire exclusion, explosion, plume, and soil. Those seem to be the biggest areas of concerns of where we're seeing this misinformation come in. So we'll level set, I'll give you some examples. And at any point there's any questions, gentlemen, please stop, ask. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. So without further ado, we'll dive into this here. So what this is, is battery energy storage system. This is the concept. So there are multiple applications for battery energy storage systems. As you can see in the top, you have your solar, sorry, you have turbines, you have solar, you can connect to the grid. Again, there's multiple different applications, but for the most part, what we want to do is we want to highlight that there isn't one specific way that battery energy systems are utilized. So when you see these containers, right, they look like Connex boxes, all the doors are closed and they're locked. I wanted to just give you a brief little information point on what's behind those doors. So there's a cell, right? Those cells get put into modules, those modules then get placed into racks, and then those racks get placed into those containers. Those containers, we're not walking into them anymore. They used to be walk-in containers, now they just house the equipment. So when you see these, there's no expectation of anyone to enter into the container. You'd be lucky if you can slide a dollar bill, that's how tight these containers are. So just a little bit of a background of what you're seeing when you look at those containers of what's inside. Real quick story. I like to see myself as, I'm not a younger guy anymore, I'm not an older guy. So I was in Texas doing this training, and I tried to level set with a group of young firefighters. And I said, guys, I said, the cells are about the size of a thesaurus. And I had, sir, you're laughing, the same thing I did. And the kids, he goes, what's a thesaurus? I go, how about a bible? Can we do like a bible? Maybe that's a better idea. So just to give a background, when I talk about a cell about the size of a thesaurus, for those of us that can relate to it, I thought that was a pretty funny talking point that thesaurus got brought up. So let's talk about the concept, all right? Let's talk about what we're looking at. So we're going to look at a rendering of what a site looks like. From a firefighter's perspective, for me, this is a home run of a response, because I'm seeing the same three pieces of equipment over and over. I'm seeing the container, I'm seeing an inverter, and I'm seeing a transformer. If I go out to a call for service, whether it's in a commercial area, whether it's a residential area, I don't have a blueprint of the house. I don't know what I'm walking into. So every home, every response is always different. At these energy facilities or these storage facilities, it's the same three pieces of equipment. So as a response standpoint, I know exactly what I'm looking at. My response doesn't change. I know exactly what we're going to do, how we're going to set up, and essentially keeping all the members safe. So here's a rendering of what a site may look like. So when we talk about the three pieces of equipment, you can see the containers, and then you can see the inverters and the transformers. Again, it's a lot of redundancy, it's a lot of the same thing over and over. As we've seen before, the designs could change, there could be more containers, there could be less. But from a response perspective or an overview, this is what a project may look like. It's very, it's imperative that we discuss where the industry was to where it is now. And you brought up a very good point as far as technology. So I like to bring up incidents. And now, I don't like when incidents happen, right? They are highly unlikely, but what they do when incidents happen, I can gather, I can gather information, I can gather data and facts. So it helps me validate what our response is, and what has gone on, and how it's changed. So I'm going to highlight some incidents that have occurred, and what the industry has done to get better throughout the years moving forward. So for some people, or people go up online and they type into Google, and they look up, you know, battery energy storage, Moss Landing comes up. Moss Landing was a bad battery storage facility fire that occurred before codes and before standards. So on the left-hand side, you'll see Moss Landing. On the right-hand side, what you'll see is what we're operating with nowadays. So Moss Landing is equivalent to, and the best way to give you a level set standpoint is, take three or four Home Depots, put them next to each other. That's how big Moss Landing was. Now, what we're dealing with is a 24 by 9 container, as you can see on the slide there, to the right, or maybe your left. It's about the size of a shed. It's no expectation of anyone to walk in, they're separated. Again, response tactics and philosophies back then, totally different. Technology, technology was extremely different also. So we look at what we're utilizing today. So when we look at technology, we look at cell phones, right? Every year, they can, technology continues to improve, it continues to get safer. So I like to highlight this incident, because people look up battery energy storage, they see Moss Landing, but again, I like to level set, provide information. This is where the industry is now. Like I said to you, I'm going to share some facts, and I'm going to share some data. This is what helps us train the firefighters, this is what helps us make sure response gets better, but it also provides information about incidents. So this is all public information that's released. These aren't my findings, but I like to do the homework for everyone, and then I welcome you guys to do your homework as well. So that's why we provide it. But it basically says that at that incident, there was no risk to public health throughout the incident. Again, I provide the QR code, this is all testing that was done by the EPA. So again, we talk about incidents, people highlight how bad they were, no such thing as a good fire, but we need to look at facts and data, and not too much fear and emotion. So when we look at these containers, we think, oh, well, they're going to be outside, they're going to be exposed to the elements. So water intrusion gets brought up. Well, what happens if it rains, right? We have technology that's outside, it's in the elements. So there were two separate incidents. There was one in New York State, and there was one in Idaho. So again, where the industry was to where the industry is now, is we do what's called IP-66 rating for these enclosures. So that container in question, we took 1,600, GPM stands for gallons per minute, and we flowed 1,600 of, 100 gallons of water for 20 minutes, and there was no intrusion of water. One thing I like to give to the younger generation is I give the example of, if you ever have went to use the restroom, and you dropped your phone in the toilet, and you pick it up and it still works, that's what IP-66 means. So again, it prevents water from being entered into the container. We like to tell our junior firefighters that we're going to give you a lawn chair, we're going to put you inside, let us know in 20 minutes if there was any water that comes inside. We don't really do that, but we like to tell them that we're going to.
Is that a test that's required on every installation of one of these?
So there is testing at every level, which we're going to get into, modules, cell, rack, and container. So yes, there are multiple levels of testings that has to be passed and approved before they manufacture.
Is that during the manufacturing process, or after the installation?
Yes, at manufacturing, well before it goes online.
Okay.
So our response philosophy, for people who aren't, whether you're a professional firefighter or volunteer firefighter, to me, fire is fire, it doesn't make a difference. So this is what we, this is what we see. As firefighters leave the firehouse, we're going to save life and property. Life is paramount, property not something we're overly concerned with. But I like to put this picture up, because these homes are on top of each other. Our expectation when we leave is, we're going to put this fire out, we're going to keep everybody safe. I want to provide you in the next slide a video of what a fire of a battery energy storage container looks like. But just keep in mind, remember this photo of what we're seeing. So this is a fire, a residential fire, which most firefighters would respond to. This is an example of a battery storage fire. Now, there's two takeaways here. I want to discuss the water, but more so, the slide prior to this was a bad house fire. This is the type of fire we're seeing at a battery energy storage facility. From a firefighter's perspective, I'll take this any day of the week, twice on Sundays. Now, I just want to touch on the application of water. I will, as a firefighter, I will never stand up here and criticize a fire chief's response to an incident. What I will say is, this is a good training moment. The amount of water being applied here is no longer the response tactic. The response tactic we use is, we apply intermittent water to the adjacent containers. So this amount of water and apparatus would not be needed. And this is what we're training the firefighters now, in the industry of, you're going to maintain a safe standoff distance, you're going to monitor the temperatures of the adjacent containers, and we're just going to keep them cool. So we're going to go back, I just want to go back one second. So this is what we respond to, and there's tons of homes. I'll take a response to a battery energy storage, because again, it's a lot more manageable, and it's a lot safer. So when we talk about intervention and containment, like I was saying just before, the water application here is not being applied for suppression. We're not trying to put the fire out, we're just keeping the containers next to it cool, because that fire is going to burn itself out. The fuel for that fire is the energy that's stored. So I don't need firefighters to go in, I don't need firefighters to get close to that container. Again, we're just doing that to monitor our data points, keep those containers cool, and the event will manage itself.
Sir James?
Yes, sir.
On the, the house fire, could you talk a little bit, just briefly, about why a house fire is worse than a battery fire, based on the toxins that are coming out of a house fire? Because back in 10, 12, 14 months ago, I would have thought a battery fire was worse EPA-wise than a house fire, but then after learning everything about it, can, just a brief explanation?
Yes, sir. You've had the advantage to hear this, so you're a little bit ahead of me, but I'm glad to highlight it now. So this is the example I tell people. I have a two-car garage at home. What do I keep in the two-car garage, or what do you keep in your two-car garage? Before you answer, I'm going to tell you. Everything that your wife or your spouse doesn't let you keep in the house, right? That's the reality of it.
Not the car.
Not the car, of course, because there's not enough room. So when I walk into my garage, and I'm going to speak upon what I know, because it's my garage. I have lawn fertilizer, I have kerosene for the heater, I have gasoline for the lawnmower, I have my aerosols, I have about six cans of paint, because I got to make sure I keep extra for the trim, you know, when the dog kind of bites it or chews on it. And the list of plastics, like, the list continues to go on and on. So when we go to a house fire, no one knows what's in the person's garage. And I've been to some pretty interesting house fires, where, I'll share a story a little later on, about something we found. But the reality of it is, when I go to a house fire, I don't know what's burning. I don't know what's in the house. When I go to a battery energy storage fire, I know exactly what I'm dealing with. So when we like to level set, we like to look and take into account of, you know, is there a risk at every fire? Absolutely. But I don't need to risk members of the fire service, and again, I don't know what's burning in that house. So to your point, thank you for bringing that up, getting ahead of it. We like to talk about that, because I think that's pretty relatable, because everyone has a garage, and we all know what we keep or don't keep in there. Excuse me. So this slide here, overcoming internal pressure, what does that mean? So when we talk about these fires, right, we talk about, and you saw in the video, the fire that's happening at the battery energy storage system. The pressure that's coming out of those cells that's on fire would be similar to trying to blow into the valve stem of your car tire. So it's just the way that the technology is, it's the way that the fires occur. We can't get water into the fire to suppress it, because of the amount of pressure that's coming out. So the response tactic is, we step back, we keep the adjacent containers cool, and as the energy continues to decrease, that fire then decreases, and it burns itself out. So that's kind of where we like to understand the two of, what the response tactic is. Another point that gets brought up, that's always a concern, or people ask us, is, you know, can this cause a wildfire? There's different classes of fire. So Class A fire, to your point of a house fire, right? Well, house fire has all different constituents of things that could be burning, which could cause embers. It's how you could see some type of fire outside of, you know, down the street, down the road, whatever the case may be. These are Class C fires, there's no embers. So there is vegetation management, there are codes and standards that are put in place at these best facilities to ensure what the vegetation looks like. But again, just to get back to it, there is no embers that are produced. At the highly unlikely event there was to be a fire at one of these facilities. So something we're going to discuss, and I, again, this is when you had brought up of where the industry has been, where it was, and where we're at now. So we're going to talk briefly about the Mcmick, the Mcmickin incident that occurred. So that incident, that was a walk-in container. We don't, we don't build those anymore, we don't expect the firefighters to go inside. The gases build up and cause an explosion. That was before standards. Since then, there've been two standards that have been implemented, NFPA 68 and NFPA 69. And I'll give you a brief overview of what those standards are. So NFPA 68 is a defogration vent. So what that is, is if there is some type of event occurring in the container, there are defogration panels on the roofs that will open up. So those gases aren't allowed to build up inside the container, those vents open up, those gases are removed from the container, they're removing the opportunity for some type of explosion. So that's one system. The second system that they've implemented is a flammable gas purge. What that is, is if those gases are detected, a fresh air intake fan is activated, and it expels those gases out of the container. So two different ways of doing the removal of those gases. Some systems have what's called belt and suspenders, which means they have both, but one of these is required now by code in any of these, in any of these containers. So again, before standards, we didn't have any, now we have one, if not two. We talk about plume, and what we see here is, again, I like to bring facts and data to the table, and I like to digest the incident. So if you look on your screen, there's a light pink area with a blue dot with some, like, it looks like a fire. So that is a battery energy storage facility, okay? There was an event occurring there. The pink area around it was ordered to evacuate. The purple area was ordered to shelter in place. That's a very large area, that's a very large incident to try to manage, and that's a very big strain on resources. So what we did is, we have access to the results of the air monitoring done that day. So what we like to do is, show you the areas that were concerned, and that were removed, and frankly, a lot of things were done for the wrong reasons. So let's look at the data from that day. So the data from that day is right here. I'm going to kind of break down what this means. This is data that was tested at the fence line. So at the fence line of the facility, we did air monitoring. The only thing that was recorded were two parts per million of hydrogen cyanide. Now, that sounds absolutely terrible. Hydrogen cyanide is a burning plastic, it's also found in cigarette smoke. So if we go back to this picture, that entire area was either evacuated or ordered to shelter in place. This decision was made off of fear and emotion, not facts and data. Because the facts and the data shows that the only constituents found at that fence line were two parts per million, which is a very small number. So again, I don't like when incidents occur, but I'm a very number-driven person, and this provides me facts. And I like to provide facts, not only to you, but to the firefighters. Listen, I'm a firefighter, I want these firefighters to know what the responses are, and what we're looking at. So again, this is what the data shows from that incident. So this is a post-fire water and plume report. Again, this is public information, this is testing that was done, not by me, this is testing that was done by a third party. These are things, this is data that was recorded, there were no harmful toxins found. So again, I share this information, I welcome you to do your research. I like to bring it to you, so you can save some time, and you don't have to do as much of it. But I do a deep dive into a lot of this, because one thing I do, and one of my biggest tasks, is I travel all over the country and I train fire departments. I train fire departments and firefighters on what the response looks like. I need to know what goes on at these incidents, to give them their best tactic, and this is the data that I provide to them. So we touched basic, briefly, on the testing. Yes, sir?
So are you from here in the valley?
I'm from New Jersey.
Okay. So you're showing us all these fires all over the country. We had one a month and a half ago in Phoenix, and I never did hear how that turned out. Do you know, have any info on it?
So the, the one in Peoria?
Yeah, somewhere on the east-west side.
Yes. So the video that I had showed you, that was actually from Peoria. The investigation hasn't been completed at this time, so I usually don't dive into it until there's a full report done by the agency that's doing the investigation. When the report does come out, I will look into it. So the facts, or the information I'm providing is all post-incident, post-report, post-finding. So I am aware of it, and that's why I actually chose that video to share with you, because that's, that's close to home, that's your, that's here. So it just kind of gives an idea.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
James, one more thing. You showed the battery fire, that there was only two parts per million. What about a house fire? Do you have data on what dangerous toxins come from that one house fire that you happened to show?
Sure.
Or a house fire?
So when we, good point. So when we talk about house fires, there is a laundry list of constituents, and I could obtain data, I don't have data, but the reason I know is because everyone's houses are different. So what we try to do is, we try to provide information of, I know exactly what I'm looking at at a fire at a best facility. When I level set by saying, what's in your garage? Everyone is different. And everyone knows that there's all different constituents, or different things that we house in our homes, our garages, whatever the case may be. So houses, it could vary, but I could tell you this, between your sidings, your gasoline, your plastics alone, a house fire can consist of a lot of harmful things that are burning, a lot of toxins.
So is there any way of getting something from any house fire? I'm just talking about mattresses, you know, mattresses, couches, the general, forget the garage, because we all know, my garage, I have three cars.
Oh.
Cars in the garage.
Okay.
Which is going to have plastics, gas.
Sure.
The whole nine yards. But the average house is generally the same, couches, carpet.
Yeah.
Know what I'm saying? That would be a good way to show what's coming out of a fire of a house, just as an average, is what I would suggest.
Absolutely. And I can get you some data just for room and contents. Good point, take the garb, take the garage out of it. Everyone, room and contents is very similar. So I can get you data, I'm sure we have it, our engineers have some type of data, and I'll share that with you for sure. But again, it's much, much different, but absolutely, so, yes, please, I will get that for you. When we discuss testing, when we discuss the testing of the container, so there is required testing on every level. So the cell level, the module, the unit level, and the installation level. So before these systems are going out and being put online, there's a lot of rigorous testing that's done prior to that. That's more so on the engineering side. Again, I like to tell people, I work for a fire and engineering firm, I'm a firefighter, not a fire engineer. We have engineers and experts that can attest to those tests that are done and completed, but there are required testing that does go into these facilities prior to being brought So we look at some of the, again, I'm throwing a lot of numbers and constituents that use. So when we talk about plume and thresholds, we talk about the four main elements we see, carbon monoxide, carbon dioxide, hydrogen, and methane. Those sound terrible. Well, they're in our everyday lives. I will bring you to this next slide to kind of put things into perspective here. So we talk about incidents, so if, and I'm going to, I don't like to get too deep into it, but this is a call for service that the fire department and the police department went to. Gentleman went into his car, in his garage, started his car, he was overcome by the gases, subsequently passed away, right? Carbon monoxide, or carbon dioxide. When they got there and they opened the door, right, this is how we kind of understand, can those gases kill you? They can, it happened. When we opened the garage door, though, did we kill the neighbor? No. Did you kill the person across the street? No. Traffic jams, LA, New York, all over the board. Do people die in traffic jams? No. So when we look at it, we have to look at what those gases do. Those gases rise and they dissipate. So if you stand back and you go to the back end of a car, and you inhale the fumes coming out of it, yes, that's harmful. But when you're standing three feet away, you're not, it's not harmful. So we like to look at the numbers, I like to provide you facts, but I also like to say, these are things that exist every day that we deal with. So we talked about the gas behavior, right? So it's rising and it's dissipating, it's not staying low to the ground. So the further you move away from any type of fire or event or incident, very similar to what those gases do in a traffic jam, right? They rise and they dissipate, that's just how these gases react. So this is, this is where I would go back, and, sir, thank you for bringing this up earlier. I like to tell people, you know, no such thing as a good fire. That fire in the bottom right-hand corner, that's what firefighters go to, that's a house fire. That's, that's what we deal with. We don't know what's burning. The top left, I know exactly what's burning. And I'm not saying one is better than the other, but the bottom right one, I could tell you this, because I've been in the fire service for 22 years. You know where people are standing when this fire is occurring, on the bottom right? Across the street. And they're taking their phones out and they're recording it, because that's what people do. So they don't want to evacuate for a house fire, but people want to evacuate seven miles for a battery energy storage fire. We need to understand what we're dealing with. So again, I know what's burning in the top left, I don't. And these incidents are so highly unlikely, that we like to understand that as the more systems that come online, the events continue to decrease, and that goes back to the technology. Technology's improving, we're not seeing a lot of incidents occurring. And this is a, this is a fire at Home Depot, seven alarm fire, California. Again, we don't, Home Depot, we've all been there, we know what's in the shelves and what's on the floor, versus a storage fire. So we talk about soil. People always want to know, well, we're putting water, we're putting intermittent water on these, on these containers, what is that doing to the soil? Where's the water going, right? Again, provide you the facts and the data. Couple incidents. This is in New York, this is an older system, right? We talk about how there's many different systems that have been online for quite some time. This is an indoor facility, which we no longer build. Either way, they ran the deluge system for 24 hours. This is before the training we had and before we know what we know today. 24 hours they ran water. They went in and tested the soil after because obviously that water has to go somewhere. The results, which I'll share after this slide because there was another incident where they ran water. So no harmful levels of toxins detected at the site of the battery storage fire. So they tested the soil where this fire had occurred, and they didn't find any harmful toxins. This is again, public information that's coming out. Third-party site, they did air monitoring, surface sampling. No evidence of off-site migration of the contaminants. So when we talk about areas of concern, fire, explosion, plume, and soil, I like to give you data. I like to give you facts. And the last, so this slide, this makes a lot of sense. This is kind of really what brings everything home. Again, older, older design, older setup. Six million gallons of water. We will not be using six million gallons of water. But I want you to take away from this is, when we look at the soil, I'm gonna tell you exactly what happened. And I give the chief of this fire department who managed this incident, all the credit in the world. The EPA showed up at this incident and said, "Hey, chief, you are going to contain all of the water that you're using here today." So not only did the chief do a phenomenal job by keeping the members safe, managing the incident, he contained six million gallons of water. Again, which is not what we're going to do today because that's not the philosophy. But the takeaway from this is, the six million gallons of water that they contained, that they used at that fire, the EPA tested it. The results and their findings, that water was released back into the community because there was nothing found. So our response tactic today is, we are not using an overwhelming amount of water. But what we're seeing and from the data and the facts that are being provided to us, we've tested the soil, we have findings, wasn't harmful. So I like, the last thing I end is, I always end with firefighter safety. Your first responders are the ones going to these calls for service. And like I said before, I don't care whether you're paid or whether you're a volunteer. Fire's fire. First responders do a great job. Their job is to go home. My job is to give them the tools and the resources to get them home and get them home safely. But when it comes to managing a highly unlikely event at a best facility, I like their opportunity. I like their odds because we are getting more data and facts to keep them safe and to get them to go home. And again, the incidents at this point continue to decrease. So I like to always end on a high note with our first responders. If there's any questions, I would be more than happy to answer anything that we discussed today. I do have some homework to do. Thank you, sir. I will get you that information so you can bring back to the board. Is there anything that you need to, maybe some further clarification or something I didn't discuss or answer? I'm happy to shed some light on it.
Well, I think the whole reason for this is because we have open space and people are just trying to use all of our land to cover it with solar and then the batteries to store this, you know, and there's much more efficient things coming down the road. So a lot of people are fed up with all the solar farms and the battery storage. So what you're saying is, when these battery storage are remote, there's really no danger to any nearby houses. Just let them burn out, just protect the other ones from catching fire. And that's gonna definitely, most likely be the process for fighting these is, let them burn. They're out in the middle of a field and don't let anything else burn.
Yes, sir. And from a firefighter's perspective, that's a good response. And like I said, these incidents are.
And you also basically said you can't put it out, right?
Correct. We're learning a lot as the industry is continuing to grow, but we're not using water for suppression. It's for other purposes.
So the people that might be at risk are people that, and it's expensive to do so, the ones that cover their roof with solar and put a big battery in their house. Those are the folks that are probably more at risk than doing these remote battery storages.
I think remote, you know, application of solar energy on residences is more of a personal preference. But technology continues to get better and improve. And, you know, so safety is paramount for all these companies. And that's what they would monitor their, you know, their application around. So personal safety of, you know, solar or energy in a home is a little different than it is on a larger scale. But safety is obviously paramount.
Okay. I'd kind of like to ask about batteries on airplanes, but I think that's probably off of the topic. And, you know, I think every now and one, one will go off in the luggage compartment of something, I don't know what it is, something lithium in there. How much is that danger? But I don't think we're really supposed to talk about that.
It's hard to put it out.
Yeah.
If you're 30,000 feet in the air.
Exactly.
So real quick question. Just out of curiosity, I mean, we're, you know, 24-foot container, right? So you keep everything cool around it. How long does something like that burn? You know, I mean, I know that it's different in every situation, but, you know, roughly?
No, and that's a great question. So the best way to give you the answer is if you, everything's based upon what's called state of charge. So if you look at your cell phone and you have 20%, there's not a lot of energy left. If you look at your phone, in the morning you wake up, it's at 100%. So the duration of the incident, it's hard to tell how long because it's depending on how much energy is stored in that container. But what we do have is, we do have data points. So when your firefighters show up, they're gonna have an opportunity to see how much energy is in that specific container. And they're gonna be able to understand, is this a longer incident? Is this a shorter incident? So unfortunately, there is no direct answer because it's very specific to how much energy is actually currently stored in that battery, if that makes sense.
No, thank you. That's interesting.
James, the average-sized container that most people are using, because Jeff, you know, I've seen solar, they were 24-foot containers. Are they still using 2040s or are they only using 20-footers now? Or does that matter? Because my understanding is, they're able to start using less containers because the battery technology is getting better. So each container used to be about 1 kilowatt. Now I've heard they're up as far as 3 to 5 kilowatts.
Great. So yes, great question. Thank you for bringing it up. When it comes to containers, sizes, and energy stored, that goes back on to who's gonna be operating the project when they're deciding which manufacturer they're going to be using. It's almost like going to buy a pickup truck. Some people want Ford, some people want Chevy, some people want Nissan. So you all have windshield wipers, brakes, and, you know, turn signals. So they all have the same features, but as far as specifics, it obviously, that comes back to the owner of the project. The response is ultimately still the same. It's just a matter of what they choose to utilize in their, you know, facility.
So there won't be a standard to go to smaller eventually, you think? Because again, to me, if you have less containers, instead of having, it's also gonna take up less land. It's gonna make people, you know, less freaked out that there's 70 containers opposed to 10 containers.
No, and I.
I gotta assume there's a cost savings on that because.
No, and I think you're very correct with that statement. And I feel as the industry continues to grow and technology continues to improve, it would be much more beneficial on all fronts to make smaller containers. I agree. I just don't know what that looks like. And like I said, technology in everyday life has continued to grow and improve. So what our conversation may be in two or three years from now could be significantly different. So, but yes, that would make the most sense to put more in less. Yes, sir.
Any more questions?
No, it was good. Very informative. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much for your time. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Very helpful. Thanks, Rich.
Dedrick?
Chairman, can I just give a quick intro to this?
Absolutely.
Yeah, just a little bit of a bigger picture before Dedrick gets into the details. It's a discussion on the approach for updating and revising the development code in general. As I've personally been looking into this and getting into the weeds and the executive team with the folks that are working on the code itself, it's pretty clear that not only because of how fast the marketplace changes, but also how much we're dealing with, that it would be more effective to bring these to you and to the community and stakeholders in smaller chunks so that they could be focused on and executed effectively. And so that's the approach that we're gonna take. And this is an example of one of the first ones, accessory dwelling units. And it's being done first because there is a statutory change and we have some deadlines to conform with those.
Okay, great. Thank you for that explanation.
Yep, and thank you, Leo, for the introduction. As Leo stated, this is the first of many text amendments to the zoning ordinance. Probably should say, go back a little bit. Good morning, Chairman and members of the board. Dedrick Denton, interim community development director, here to give you a presentation on the accessory dwelling units. PZC 00125 is a text amendment to the Penalt County Development Services Code, Section 2.150.240, Guest House and Casitas. This amendment will rename Guest House and Casitas to accessory dwelling units to comply with Arizona revised state statutes 11.810.01, which governs accessory dwelling units. To give you a little bit of background information on the House Bill 2928, it was signed by the governor of May 23rd of this year. The bill specifically defines what Arizona counties can and cannot do in regulating the development of accessory dwelling units. The bill states that counties cannot require an ADU to match the exterior design of a single-family home required extra parking to accommodate the additional of an ADU on a lot nor set rear or side setbacks for ADUs positioned more than five feet from the property line. The legislation also states that if a county fails to adopt the required development regulations by July 1st, 2026, then the ADUs shall be allowed on all lots or parcel zone for residential use in the county without limits. And that's the part that Leo was talking about earlier, the deadline we're trying to beat.
Dedrick, if you don't mind.
Yes.
Basically, they can build whatever they want and we have no, the county has no say in this.
Without limits. That's why we're trying to beat them to the punch here.
So they could build it as high as they want? They could build it as long, big as they want, as long as they're five feet off the fence line?
I think they can place as many as they want, without limits.
I should say my dad would like that.
Yeah. Right into some plans.
Do they have a percentage of the size of the home that they're next to? Or it's just like, I've got a 3,000-square-foot home and I want to put a 3,500-square-foot AD? I mean, not really, but okay, but.
There's some limits, and I can get into that. We review the proposed text amendment.
Okay, because I mean, I know there were, for a while, the ADUs had like a, or even a guest house, you know, a certain size compared to the main house.
Square feet or something.
Yeah, something like that.
And there is a size limit.
Okay, thank you.
This next slide gives you the schedule that we have for the accessory dwelling units. Three main milestones is, the first one was on November the 3rd. We did have an open house. Unfortunately, nobody from the public showed to that open house meeting. The next milestone is a P&amp;Z commission hearing on November the 20th, and then back to the board for a hearing on December the 10th.
Where was the public comment place held?
The ELC.
Where?
The ELC.
ELC.
Yes.
So we're getting to hear it before the commission?
No, after. Yeah, the commission's on November the 20th, then back to the board on the 10th.
We're getting to hear part of it, right?
Right.
Yeah, the work session.
The work session.
I prefer it that way anyway.
The official, the official.
No, I get it. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But there's no denial here. It's code. It's done. We have no say in the matter.
You have say on.
On the statutory.
On some, yeah. Except for the statutory stuff, but some of the language, you might have some say. But a lot of it does come from state statute.
Okay.
So I want to take a little bit of time just to discuss the proposed text amendment. There's really like four main sections. One is the definition section. Two is the permitted uses. Three is the requirements for the ADU. And then four are areas where the regulations do not apply. So we did include a definition section. The first one, the first definition is accessory dwelling unit. Or ADUs means a self-contained living unit that is on the same lot or parcel as a single-family dwelling unit or greater square footage than the accessory dwelling unit that includes its own sleeping and sanitation facilities and that may include its own kitchen. So that comes straight from the state statute. Gross floor area means the interior habitable area of a single-family dwelling unit or an accessory dwelling unit. And that comes from the state statute. And permitted uses means the ability for a development to be approved without requiring a public hearing, variance, conditional use permit, special permit, or special exceptions other than a discussionary zoning action to determine that a site plan conforms with the applicable zoning regulations. The next section is permitted uses. This is a new section. A is dwelling units. Each lot or parcel may have the following. One is a, one single-family dwelling unit and its, and a primary use is required. Two is one attached and one detached ADU as permitted use for a lot or parcel that is less than one acre in size. And number three, one additional detached ADU as permitted use on a lot or parcel that is one or more in size. So A2 and A3 does come from the state statute.
So they can have an attached and a detached on a lot that's less than an acre?
Yep, in size. And then on lots that are over one acre, they can have an additional detached ADU as permitted.
Two detached.
It says one additional detached ADU as permitted use on a lot or parcel that is one acre or more in size. So I guess they can have an additional detached.
They can have two.
Two detached, yep.
Okay.
If they can fit it, I guess on their lot, they can have two.
But still maintain the setback requirement of?
Of five feet.
Yes, yep, yep. So if the zone is like a little bit more restrictive, like GR, I don't know what the setbacks are, but let's just say if it was like 20 feet, they can be, they can go down to five feet for the ADU.
So that, oh, so if we've got the 20-foot, like you're saying, we gotta reduce it down to five feet?
If they choose to do so, yep.
But your horse barn needs to be 20 feet in, so don't worry about that.
Yeah, and that's ridiculous.
And my hay barn, too, I guess, huh?
And that's part of the state statute, yep. Five-foot limits on your side foot setback. And it also regulates their rear and not the front. So the front of B per your, the zoning classification, what zone you're in. And then the next section I would like to talk about is the requirements for an ADU. It's A through L. The first one, A is minimum development standards. We did strike out, shall meet the front and side setbacks of the main building. That was part of the Guest House and Casitas. So the new number one will be a minimum rear and side setback shall be five feet from the property line. So that's what we're just discussing. And then the new number two will be restrictions for ADUs will be the same as those for single-family dwelling units within the same zoning area with regards to height. Then the front setback, lot size, or coverage, or building frontage. And number three, for detached ADUs, the minimum distance from the main building shall be seven feet. So on number two, for your minimum development standards, they still would have to adhere to the height, the front setbacks, and the lot size or coverage, or front building. And then for B, front lots or parcels less than one acre in size, ADUs shall be no larger than 75% of the gross floor area of the main single-family dwelling unit on the same lot or parcel or 1,000 square feet, whichever is less. So that's the size portion that you guys asked about earlier.
Out of curiosity, five feet from the property line, but seven feet from the dwelling, from the main house, that's just fire code? I mean, is that that or is it like?
Well, the five, well, the seven feet is what we currently do for any other, like the guest house.
Right.
Yep, that have that, that's in the zoning ordinance that have that seven feet. Not sure if it relates to fire code, but it's been there for years. The five feet is the state statute.
Okay.
Yep.
So they didn't change it from, oh, by the way, it could be five feet from your main home. It just, but it has to just be that from the lot line.
Right.
And it can't be any bigger than 1,000 square feet or 75% of the main house.
Right, whichever one is less. Yep. And then if you go to lots that are greater than one acre in size, it says ADU shall be no larger than 75% of the gross livable floor area of the main single dwelling on the same lot or parcel or 1,500 square feet, whichever is less. So, a little bit bigger on the, on the less end.
Bigger lot.
Yep, exactly. And then we struck out C, which states on one, only one Guest House Casita per lot shall be allowed. And then for D, shall use the same street access that serves the main single-family dwelling unit. And then for E, the guests, I mean, the ADUs in the single-family dwelling shall not be served by a separate utility meter. That's basically what we currently do for Guest House and Casitas. F shall meet, shall be a minimum of 200 square feet. G shall have a separate exterior entrance from the single-family dwelling unit. H, this is new as well. The ADU in the single-family dwelling unit shall not be physically addressed separately. However, ADUs must have a separate unit house number. And that's more for your emergency response so we can, so they can figure out where they're at if they're calling in regards to emergency. I, a manufactured home, mobile home, recreational vehicle, or park model trailer shall not be used as an ADU except as otherwise allowed under ARS 11-820.03. That's basically, that says basically that, I guess, in certain situations, I guess you can allow a park model trailer as an ADU under certain situations. Yeah, which is kind of, I guess, counterintuitive, isn't it?
Yeah, what, yeah.
An example of a certain situation?
Well, um, let me see here.
Bring him back.
Here comes your attorney.
Yeah, I don't think I got 11-820.03, but I can look it up for you and give you a situation.
Okay.
Yep, I don't have that state statute on me on hand.
Chair, vice chair members of the Board, if I may. Briefly, that statute allows park models. It doesn't, it prohibits the county from restricting park models for use as single-family dwellings if the area is zoned for a single-family residence on three acres or more. So, in other words, if the area is zoned for a single-family residence on three acres or more, the county per statute cannot prohibit a park model trailer from being used on that property.
No matter what the primary dwelling is. I mean, it could be a stick-built, it could be a manufactured home as well.
Right.
But no matter what, if it's more than three acres, they can have a park model as a alternative unit.
That's correct. I can read the statute directly. It says a county, this is 11-820.03, a county shall allow the use of a park model trailer as an accessory dwelling unit for use as a single-family residence in a location zone for one dwelling unit per three acres or greater, unless the parcel is located in a high noise or accident potential zone. So, there's some carve-outs for that. But generally speaking, yes, if it's, if the area is zoned for one dwelling unit per three acres or greater, the county cannot restrict the use of a park model as that term is defined in statute.
I think that's a David Cook bill that was run a couple of years back. Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Next would be J. May not be built on top of a current or planned public utility easement unless the property owner receives written consent from any utility that is currently using the public utility easement or that may use the public utility easement in the future. K will be also new. This section does not supersede applicable building codes, fire codes, sensitive environmental area regulations, wildfire prevention regulations, emergency vehicle access regulations, drainage and flood control regulations, or public health and safety regulations, except that a county may not require an ADU to comply with a commercial building code or contain fire sprinklers. And the last one, L. If a new ADU will not be connected to a sewer system or if the sewer system lack capacity to serve the new ADU, the county will require that any septic system that will be used to serve the ADU be adequately sized before the construction of the ADU.
Real quick, I need to...
Yeah, go ahead.
Darren, introduce yourself because we, for the record.
For the record, good morning. Darren Gary, Deputy County Attorney, Penal County.
With that exclamation of the statute. Thank you. Okay.
Real quick. So, back on K, the county cannot require fire sprinklers. Can the fire district require them?
I would assume not since it says that ADUs to comply with a commercial building code or contain fire sprinklers. It says the county can't. I don't know.
I mean, this is just semantics. But, you know, I know like in my area where if you're over so many square, so many square feet, you have to have fire sprinklers in your home. And so, if you, you know, covered, uncovered areas. So, the county can't require, but could the fire district come in and say, oh, you've got to have them? Don't know.
They can't trump the state statute.
No, but, but that's not statute necessarily there. That's just the code. Unless you're complying with the statute in that code specifically.
Yep. It's the state statute.
And we all have different towns and cities in our districts too. They can have separate fire sprinkler rules, correct?
Yeah, your cities do. Some of them do. They have separate...
That was, that was an interesting discussion at CSA this year. Yuma and the county and the fire on that, on that county building being built.
Yes.
I don't want to get into that right now, but that's a separate discussion I should tell you about. Yeah, because we had a restaurant in Apache Junction that wanted to expand. County signed off on it, the fire just signed off on it, but the city didn't. It was a tremendous hassle for that owner.
Right.
Similar down in Yuma. But let's stick to the...
But this one's specifically for ADUs.
Back to the ADUs.
Yep, the county can't for ADUs. And then the last section is, is areas that doesn't, that does not apply to this code. So, M states that this section does not apply to lots or parcels that are located on tribal land. So, if you're located on tribal land, this does not apply. Land that is in the territory in the vicinity of a military airport or ancillary military facility or property that is in the high noise or accident potential zone as defined in ARS 28-8461, which I don't know what that stat, that state statute is, but that's defining that ARS. And third, land that is in the territory in the vicinity of a Federal Aviation Administration commercially licensed airport or a general aviation airport or land that is in the territory in the vicinity of a public airport as defined in ARS 28-8486 and that has a noise level or greater than 65 decibels. That it wouldn't be, this does not apply to. And then those, and all three of those come from state statute. And then that concludes my presentation. And if you guys have any questions in regards to ADUs.
I want to tell you, the genesis of all of this started two or three years ago. And it's, it's one of the prongs of how to approach affordable housing. It really is about, you know, providing a mother-in-law's facility or college kid or whatever, or, you know, that's what it's about. I mean, they, it gets expensive. And, and so, I think the real push was, I mean, it's not going to solve the problem of affordable housing, but it is going to be a solution for certain folks that can afford to do it. And, and they will take advantage of it and as they should. Any questions?
Yeah, it helps get the kids out of my house.
But then, you know...
How many units you putting on your property?
That's the reason not to have a separate electrical unit. You can't use it as a rental type of thing. I guess you could and nobody would know.
So, Chairman, members of the Board, the rental aspect is an entirely other can of worms. I don't know if we want to go into that now, but there's...
No, we don't.
Okay.
No. As a chair, I'm saying no, we don't.
I don't want to know.
I know state statute, they have some language that regulate vacation and rental, short-term rentals.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
Chairman, can I just ask?
Yeah.
As we go through the public comment process and stakeholder process, if there's any of them that you want us to make sure to sit down and meet with? If you could let us know, we'll do our best to identify. But in any of these processes, I think feedback from you all in your districts of people you want us to make sure we sit down and vet with would be helpful.
Absolutely.
I like that.
Absolutely, that's...
Yeah.
We'll reach out. We'll put a little notice out that it's available for public comment, even at this point in time.
Thank you, brother.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. No further business. Word adjourned.
Food truck time?
No, noon.